I would like to call the December 10th, 2007 Middletown City School Board meeting to order. Mr. Satzinger, the role?
This is Andrew.
Present.
Dr. Kabitha?
Here.
Dr. McClure?
Here.
Mrs. McNeil?
Present.
Mr. Ventarella?
Present.
And do we have anyone to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Who do we have here? It's Mr. Banks. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had to look down. Mr. Banks?
Good evening, members of the board. It's my privilege to introduce two wonderful students from Hy-Vee Elementary School, Brady Dalton, 5th grader, and Amber Maloney, 4th grader, to lead us in the pledge.
If we could all stand? Please, the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Dr. Price, are there any additions to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
Are there any deletions?
None.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Satzinger, the role?
Dr. McClure?
Aye.
Mrs. McNeil?
Aye.
Mrs. Andrew?
Yes.
Mr. Ventarella?
Yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Satzinger? Do you have minutes?
It is recommended approval of the minutes for the November 19th, 2007 Combined Work Session, and all members were present.
Is there a motion?
I move.
There's a second.
Second.
Are there any discussions around the minutes? Mr. Satzinger?
Mrs. McNeil?
Aye.
Dr. McClure?
Aye.
Mrs. Andrew?
Yes.
Mr. Ventarella?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, we do have public participation tonight, and we have one request for participation. Deborah Dornan?
Members of the board, Dr. Price, thank you for allowing me to speak again. My name's Deborah Dornan. I live on Primrose Lane. I just want to thank you again for the decisions you've made with the reinstatement of extracurriculars and many of the activities and things. I appreciate your work on behalf of our children. One decision, however, I feel is not in the best interest of the students at the high school. Moving from a 6-period day to a 7-period day will cause too many major disruptions in the educational process to make it a good move. Lengthening the school day seems like a great idea until we realize that it doesn't mean just adding an extra class to each child's schedule. In fact, it means the entire schedule has to be rewritten from scratch. I know already that two of my daughter's teachers, her advanced English 2 teacher and advanced biology teacher, will not be teaching those classes next semester, so she will not be able to have the same teacher for those classes. I don't feel that these year-long classes should be interrupted in this way. The classes and teachers do try to teach the same curriculum, but they don't all teach it at the same speed or at the same time. In English, for example, the kids in English 2 read the classic novels throughout the year, but they can't read them all at the same time as there aren't enough copies of the books for the entire sophomore class. My daughter's advanced English 2 class has read Ethan Frome, but her friend's advanced English 2 class has read To Kill a Mockingbird. So that means when these classes are mixed up next semester, some kids will be reading the same book again, which is kind of a waste of time, or they'll miss a book entirely, which isn't a good use or a good educational method either. Other issues involve supplies that teachers require for classes. They all have their own requirements, and students will have to readjust those. And many students currently in the post-secondary classes will be forced to drop AP or advanced classes due to this new schedule. All in all, I feel that the move to the 7-period day might be a good move politically, but I don't feel it's a good decision for the educational growth of the students. So I just would ask that the board would reconsider that decision and allow the high school to remain on 6 periods till the end of the year and move to the 7-period day next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that a lot of hard work and energy has gone into trying to redo this schedule. And I think, as I've even told Mrs. Dornan, there are no perfect solutions to what we're attempting to do. But is there some way that we're trying to minimize, for instance, disruption in teachers, flipping between semesters? Dr. Price, I mean...
We knew when we had...
I know, we knew, yeah.
Dornan is exactly right. When we had to do this, we had to rebuild the entire schedule. And we knew as a board that that was going to be the case and that there would be disruptions. The...I hope, yes, there are...I mean, the high school has been working tirelessly to try to do the best job they can, but giving a hand, dealt a hand, that they knew that it wasn't going to be a perfect world. There were going to be these kind of circumstances. The things with the novels, though, I'll be happy to talk with the English department because there are...I don't know, and Mr. Newell, you may be able to help me. I don't know...I don't want students reading the same book twice, or maybe able to...we may be able to find ways where they're reading a different book, all of them, that's still a classic, and adjust that way. So we will try to make those kind of adjustments, so that certainly doesn't happen. But we knew there were going to be disruptions when Mr. Newell said, "You want a what?" When I said, "You're going to rebuild the schedule."
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Price, recognitions.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Newell, the principal of the high school.
Good evening, Dr. Price, Mr. Satzinger, members of the Board of Education, and guests. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to recognize a number of middies tonight, not all by me, but nevertheless, the first two I will take care of. Mr. Ballard, Chris Ballard, would you please come forward? Chris is a four-year honor roll student and a two-year member of National Honor Society, as well as German National Honor Society. Chris served as a delegate to the American Legion Buckeye Boys State in 2007. He's an honor thespian and serves as treasurer of the thespian troop 918. Chris has participated in one act plays, as well as the dinner theater. He was named best lead actor and best supporting actor in a school play and best playwright. Chris has been captain of the academic quiz team for two years and received the GMC All Academic Award three years in a row. Outside of school, Chris is a taekwondo senior student instructor. He volunteers at Bull's Run and participated in the American Heart Association Heart Walk, as well as the thespians' trick-or-treat so kids can eat. Chris also works at Miami University Middletown in the Applied Research Center. Upon graduation, Chris plans on attending Miami University. This is one outstanding young man that I have taken a great deal of pleasure in having him at the high school for the last four years. Will his mother and father please stand up? They're all right as well.
I'd just like to thank the faculty and my parents for all the help and support they've given, and thank you. That'll be all.
Leave it to a thespian to speak.
The next middy that I'd like to recognize is Samantha Boyer. Samantha? Samantha is a two-year member of National Honor Society and a four-year honor roll student. Her activities at Middletown have included show choir, marching band, wind ensemble, thespians, student government, and the Optimist Yearbook staff. She is vice president of the Spanish Club and president of the History Club. She has also been in the All-School Musical for three years and in many ballet productions and...I'm sorry, for the musical for three years and the school one-acts one year. In the community, Sammy has performed in many ballet productions and was a soloist in the Miami Valley Theater production of The Nutcracker, the Sorg opera productions of Some Sunny Night and Kinder Concert. She also volunteers at Abilities First and has given her time to Relay for Life, All-American Weekend, and the School Levy Campaign. Samantha was a Buckeye Girls State delegate and a Rotary Club student honoree. She has worked as a childcare provider and a writing consultant in the Writing Lab at Middletown branch of Miami University. After graduation, Samantha will attend either Miami University or the Ohio State University and major in zoology. She would like to become a physical therapist. I think both of our students tonight really showcase all of the different activities that students at Middletown High School participate in, and the young lady standing in front of you is one of our best. I'd like to have her parents stand as well.
Mr. Newell? Mr. Newell? Just read this for a second. All of these awards that are being given, it says, "For excellence in the classroom and serving as a role model for students at Middletown High School." So, congratulations. Samantha, would you like to...you're welcome to say anything. You don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would now like to call Linda Brockman. Mrs. Brockman?
Good evening. I'd like to acknowledge three students this evening for their accomplishments with Business Professionals of America. I'm only going to list their accomplishments in that area, or we'd have to lengthen the meeting this evening because they're quite active. The first one could not be with us this evening, Alicia Pretty, who is ill. She is president of the chapter, Middletown Chapter of Business Professionals of America, and she's also treasurer of Region 17. She plans to go to college, she's not sure which one, and possibly major in mortuary science, and continue in the family business. I'd like to call up Alicia Smith. Alicia has a grade point average of 3.8. She's the daughter of Celia and Andrew Smith. She is our regional parliamentarian for Region 17 Business Professionals of America. For her co-op job, she works in the Adult Education Division here at Middletown. She plans to go to Hampton University in Virginia and major in the Physicians Assistant Program and possibly minor in Massage Therapy. Devon Wells, please come forward. Devon is the daughter of Daniel and Deborah Wells. She has a 3.0 grade point average. She's the class secretary for Middletown Chapter of Business Professionals of America, and she's also Region 17 Chapter Secretary. In addition, she works in her co-op job as a file clerk at Casper &amp; Casper here in Middletown. She plans to further her education in international nursing and use that in Africa. She hopes to help fight the AIDS epidemic. And also in addition, as regional officers, they have the experience of participating to screen for a state BPA office also, which is a valuable experience for them. And I congratulate them for their accomplishments.
You recognized?
No.
Guys, you're welcome to say anything, too, if you'd like. No takers on the microphone, huh?
Did you want to do the superintendent's report, so you don't do a break? Do the first one?
Do D1. Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, under D1, Mr. Scott Sears is here this evening, I believe. Mr. Sears is from Miami University Middletown, the vice president of Bunny Hollow Players. Mr. Newell, if you could also join us at the podium?
Mrs. Daniels, would you like to come forward, please?
Absolutely. It's not an option, is it?
As Dr. Price said, we're with the Bunny Hollow Players. This right here is Cory Baldwin. She's actually the treasurer. She's going to give you a little bit of history about what we actually did to be able to get this money and donation and stuff that we're actually going to give to the thespians.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This past November, we did the first play since 1999 at Miami University Middletown. We did the Play Check, please. And as our producer put it, the most performed play in high school. So, yeah. But we ended up doing Dinner Theater that night, and we raised about $1,000, over $1,000. And since you guys supported us in coming to that play, we wanted to give back to the community and give the school half of our proceeds. And here's Mr. Scott Sears.
I'd like to have Tammy stand over here and all her thespians. Well, some of them, not all, yeah. The officer people, mostly. Here is actually a thing that we made. It's actually for appreciation of all you guys' work, everybody, all the thespians of troop 918. We also do have a check coming in the mail for you guys for $500, which we'd like to donate to you guys' program. We appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank Scott and for the donation. We are self-funded program at the high school. Anything that we want to do, we have to earn our own money, so this will help us greatly. And I want to thank my officers for coming out tonight and showing support as well. Scott's a thespian alum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Albarico, could we get a group picture of these guys for potential publication? Guys might have to group it up there a little bit. Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Get used to cameras.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. For those of you who need to get back and either do some homework or practice some plays, then we'll be giving the meeting in a minute.
Please.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Mike Sanders, the executive director of the United Way, and Dr. Bob Soufert, who is the director for the Applied Research Center at Miami University Middletown.
Thank you, Dr. Price. I wanted to let you know that in April of this year, a significant event occurred in my life and also my wife's life. We had a first grandchild. And, you know, I've learned a couple of things since that time. One of the things I've learned that our grandchild was born learning. She's like a little sponge. You know, she just takes in everything, and she's just learning so much in the very brief time that she's been here with us. The other thing I've learned is that children, by the time they're three years old, 90% of their brain is developed. So the first three years of the child's life is probably one of the most important things as far as early childhood development. The United Way of Greater Middletown has developed an initiative called Success by Six, basically making sure and making an effort to make sure that every child is prepared to go to kindergarten, you know, during the first six years, that they're prepared to go to kindergarten, by the time they enter kindergarten. And one of the things that we've done is concentrating, we're going to be concentrating on early childhood development when it comes to parent education, giving the parents tools to prepare their children to enter kindergarten, and also working with childcare centers in the Greater Middletown area so that those children coming into the schools are prepared. One of the things we've done is we've embarked upon an assessment with Dr. Bob Soufert at the Applied Research Center at Miami University, and we wanted to survey approximately 400 families of children zero to six years old to find out what their needs are, what their perceptions are as far as early childhood, early childhood centers, and what they need as far as parents. So Bob Soufert from Miami University here is to give you sort of a very brief overview of that needs assessment.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just make really a few general comments. I gave the...everybody here, I think, has a copy of the slideshow, so rather than trying to go through that slide by slide, I thought you could read it, and I'll make just really some general comments. We interviewed 375, a random probability sample of 375, parents that had a child between six weeks and through five years of age. And we asked them really a variety of different questions about preparation for success in school. There were parts of the survey that addressed the issue of dental care and also medical care. But let me just talk a little bit about the results that pertain specifically to preparing children for success in school. There were nearly 500, 490 children in the 375 families. So when we looked at children six weeks through 18 months of age, the things that parents mentioned as being really primary in terms of their interest was, had to do with the safety of the child, as you would expect, cleanliness of the facility, reliability of the staff that were available to care for the child, the time that the caregiver was available, and whether or not the caregiver was personally known by the family. When we then asked the parents that had a child 18 months to less than three years of age, we interviewed over 110 children in that particular category. Again, they talked about some of the same kinds of things as being of primary interest to them: safety of the child, cleanliness of the facility, reliability, time that the caregiver was available, and whether or not the caregiver was personally known by the family. When we then asked the parents that had a child 18 months to less than three years of age, we interviewed over 110 children in that particular category. Again, they talked about some of the same kinds of things as being of primary interest to them: safety of the child, cleanliness of the facility, reliability, time that the caregiver was available, and learning activity. So as the child gets older, what you see and hear the parents talking about is increased importance of learning activities, other kinds of endeavors that are really going to help the child be successful when they go to school. Then for the child three years of age but less than six years of age, there were 253 children in that particular category. Again, they talked about the same kind of issues of safety, reliability, cleanliness, et cetera, but for the first time, they mentioned the importance of really having high-quality staff in terms of being primary, their primary concern in terms of the child being prepared for success in school. Then, as you look back on my page six of the slideshow, we asked them about the importance of licensed care and the importance of a facility being accredited. And so what you see is the child gets older, we'll talk with families that have children that are older, the increased importance of having access to really high-quality licensed facilities in terms of the child being successful in school. You also see on page seven of that slideshow the importance of really high-quality learning activity being available and the importance that the caregiver prepares the child for success in school. So those were some of the really important things. And you can look through the data. Mike has a number of copies. I think we gave you, what, about 30 copies or so of the report itself, which goes into detail about those issues. The next part of the survey dealt with dental care and health care access. And then the last part of the survey, we, in the report itself, we prepared a set of policy recommendations. But all I want to talk about tonight, just in terms of the time that's available, is two of the major conclusions. One of the major conclusions that came out of the study was really the importance of the United Way and other social service agencies in this particular geographical area really educating parents about the importance of having high-quality early childcare relative to the child being successful when they transition into school. And another primary conclusion was that the United Way should encourage parents to really seek out high-quality care. So not only do we need to endeavor within the city of Middletown to make sure that there is high-quality care available, but we also need to educate parents about the importance of using high-quality licensed facilities where possible in order to help the child be more successful as they transition into school. Mike, is there anything that you wanted to mention? So those were some of the highlights of the survey. As I said, it's a pretty lengthy report. It's probably about 100 and some pages of statistical material and so on, and I'm sure Mike would share some of that information with you, and I would be glad to make it available if anyone would like to look at the report.
Bob, can you take some questions?
Yeah, sure.
If there are. Some of these things seem obvious to many of us in the room, but, you know, it's amazing that they're probably not as obvious to everyone in the community as you might think. Can you just comment on that, Nick?
One of the things that I found when I was asked, when I was approached with regard to doing the study was to do some focus groups with people who work in childcare facilities. And what was interesting is I talked with people that work in the facilities. You know, a tremendously large number of those individuals weren't really fully informed about the initiatives that's taking place at the state level to increase the quality of childcare. So there was, I think it was, one of the primary conclusions that I gleaned from those conversations and also with the parents was really the importance of educating parents and even people that are working within these facilities about the importance of having high-quality staff, licensed, top-quality facilities, and what that means in terms of success in school.
And I would say to the board that the United Way has made this a priority, and this is something that is going to, is already beneficial to our kids that are going to be coming into Middletown City Schools. And it's been a pleasure working with these guys. It's been great. They've involved us. We've been partners in this since the beginning.
I've been waiting for this report since initial meetings of organizations to come together, and appreciate our staff's willingness and time to help with the committee to have that connections with the Middletown schools. My first question is, has the United Way in doing this study come to any new thinking about how to help families afford quality daycare, childcare? Because, you know, it's all well and good to believe this and truly want that for your child to be in a high-quality situation, but to be able to afford it is something else.
Katie, as far as the affordability, that's an issue that we haven't really addressed yet. I think that where we're going to concentrate on it is two different areas. One of them is working with the childcare centers to make sure that they have the staff, the resources necessary to do the early childhood development type curriculum and program that they need to do. The other thing is also educating the parents of the importance of early childhood development, and then also giving the parents tools. I mentioned born learning as far as our granddaughter. There are tools out there that have been prepared nationally by United Way of America and a couple other organizations. It's called born learning, which is radio, TV ads, posters, also materials that we can give to parents to use as tools when it comes to their, excuse me, when it comes to their early child development with their own children. So I think those are the two areas that we're starting to concentrate on now. As far as the affordability and parents being able to afford early childhood development, childcare centers, that's something we haven't even addressed yet at this point.
Ms. Alter, can you...I don't remember the statistics, and I'm hoping you do off the top of your head. We do a screening for kindergarten students. All of our kindergarten students will come in into this district, and it's called KRAL. I forget exactly what that acronym stands for. It's K-R-A-L, kindergarten readiness.
Assessment for literacy.
And we look at the scores of the students coming in. And could you just share a little bit of information about the scores of this past year's kindergarten class that came in?
And Carolyn is going to talk just a little bit about the KRAL when we talk about kindergarten. The state would like students to be at a 19 on the KRAL. There are 29 points that they can earn. Student who comes in on a 19 is considered ready for kindergarten. Our district comes in at a 16.67 as an average. Our district comes in at a 16.67 as an average, but one of our buildings comes in at a 12 average and one comes in at a 14 average. So we have quite a challenge in our district to make sure that we're providing the type of kindergarten experience, which you'll hear a little bit about later, to get them up to level so that they're ready for first grade at the end of kindergarten.
And that's why, I mean, that's why our partnership here in this work is so critically important, because when you, when you have the number of kindergarten students coming in, it's not because those kids can't learn. We know that the kids can learn, but they have lots of barriers. And programs like this can help remove some of those barriers so that they come to us ready at what we would consider a readiness level. And we're not going to turn them away at the door. You don't, you know, the parents are sending us the best kids they have, and we're not going to turn them away. But if we can get things like this in place to help improve the quality before they get to our doors, it'll make a big difference for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Dr. Price?
Yes, Mrs. Collins is going to do an update for the equity work that we've been doing.
Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to be here to bring you an update about the work that we've been doing in equity. That's a continuation of three years of, of work previously. Last year, when we had the, the board retreat, we added the paragraph to our, our district mission stating that we recognize the need to prepare students to become productive members of a democratic society. And to do that, we envision doing the following. And the first two elements are basically the equity goal and the equity work that our mission requires of us, that is, to raise achievement levels of all students and to eliminate achievement gaps. If and when we do that, we will definitely be able to say that we are rated excellent on the state report card. So this work is vital and continues to be the center of our efforts to improve achievement for all students. We've been doing this by using the vehicle of courageous conversations. You've heard us talk about, about this for the last three years. Through these professional development opportunities, talking and using courageous conversations, being prepared to speak our truth and to learn from each other, we have been developing a deepening equity lens through which we look at everything that we're doing in the district. And this has made a tremendous difference in many of the decisions that we're bringing to you as a board. This has been a multi-team approach, and I know you will remember some of these, the first of which, the equity leadership teams. That was the first group that we began working with three years ago. The teams consist of the principal and at least two members of his or her staff. In our larger buildings, there are more teachers involved. And we've had intense professional development. It's been focused on strengthening the will, skill, knowledge, and capacity to support colleagues in the building with the work that they are attempting to do in understanding race and addressing the racial achievement gap. This year, we've added a new wrinkle to the work of our equity teams, well, we will be adding it to the teams eventually as we go through the year. We started equity walkthroughs. We did the first of those two weeks ago with teams of building principals, small teams of principals, and central office administrators. And we spent three to five minutes in a variety of classrooms across the district in various buildings. At the end of that, about an hour of visiting as many classrooms as we could, we debriefed together for about a half an hour. And one of the principals said to me, that's been the richest, deepest conversations that he has, has felt that he's been a part of since we began this work, because we were looking at student engagement when we went into the classroom, particularly the engagement of our, our students who are most at risk, our African-Americans, our Latinos, and our Appalachian children. And that was the focus and will continue to be the focus. We'll do the, another formal one with all of the principals and with the central office administrators again in the spring. But in the meantime, we are hoping that building principals will take their equity teams, their teachers, and do the same kind of activity within their building so that they can provide feedback to their staffs, to their peers, about what's going on in their building and what might be a way to begin to improve. We were laughing earlier tonight about acronyms. You know, we love them in education, and here's one of them. CARE, Collaborative Action Research for Equity. We have CARE teams, again. They're made up of principals and teachers in each building. Their focus is really on what's going on in the classroom itself. They foster collaborative research to discover, develop, document, deliver, and disseminate culturally responsive teaching and learning strategies for identified low-performing focus group students. We have been doing CARE lesson consultation for a year on a very limited basis. That's going to expand this year. In the past, a teacher would design a CARE lesson with specific strategies in mind for a group of students that they wanted to impact and see improve. And then a couple of people would go in and observe the lesson and then have time afterwards for feedback and conversation about what happened, ask some questions, get some other information. We felt that was very powerful, but what we tried when we did this last week for the first time was to bring both the teachers, or in some cases, three teachers, CARE teachers, together. One teacher would, would demonstrate the lesson, then the whole group, including a central office administrator, the principal, and the other CARE teachers would sit down and talk about what they saw. Then they would go to the next CARE teacher's classroom and go through the same piece. It expands the conversation tremendously and, at least for the ones that I participated in, I feel that, that we've really made a step forward in making this be more impactful for everybody involved. And then naturally, the, the natural outcome for this will be transforming and taking those strategies that were, were successful in particular classrooms and disseminating them with the, with the rest of the staff. So we will be expecting to see three sets, three additional sets of CARE lesson consultations throughout the school year, which will in fact triple the activity that our teachers have been involved in the past. Past, another one, Partnership for Academically Successful Students, is the parented community group. They meet to collaborate, share ideas, and they have met, will be meeting four times over the course of this school year as a big group. And then intervening months will be meeting in their buildings to continue to craft their plan for their building, to give parents a stronger voice in what's going on with their children and their, and their, their education. So this again is a continuation of programming that you've heard me talk about in the past. New this year is DLP. This is our district equity leadership team. We'll have to add this to your list so you'll know what all these things are. And over the, the last three years, we've had these pieces in place, but we didn't have an umbrella to oversee, to, to manage it, so to speak, and to monitor what was going on. So we have created an equity leadership team for the whole district. These are the members currently of the team. We've been meeting since August as a group, learning to use the Courageous Conversations framework with a group of people, some of whom had been exposed to this in depth and some who had not. We're particularly pleased to have a couple of parents on the team, and they have become more and more comfortable with our conversations and have been participating. We really have three charges that the DLP team is to deal with this year. One is to continue our own professional development and as a group, learn to continue to work together so that we can deepen our own understanding of race and equity and put that to work with what we are going to do in dealing with a plan for our whole district. Eventually, we're going to be examining district policies, practices, programs, structures, climate, culture, everything that impacts what we are doing in terms of what might be barriers to equity and excellence. That's the big, that's a big chunk, and we're not quite yet ready to do that, because our third and really our, our major goal right now is to develop an equity transformation framework, a plan, so to speak. We're going to start with a one year and move it out two and three years, so that we have a overview of what we want our work to continue to look like and how we're going to bring more and more people into an understanding of what we're doing. We have the support of a recent, recently organized group, Consortium on Racial Equity in K-12 Education. It is centered at Miami University, and actually, Dr. Price is probably one of the spearheads for bringing this group together. We are part of this consortium that includes Alawanda, Butler Tech, Bearfield, Mason, Ohio Department of Education, and the Board of Regents.
And Dayton will be joining.
And Dayton is joining, that's okay. We have a, we meet as a large group several times a year and are, are all tackling similar, similar issues, and it's good to have people to bounce ideas off of and hear what other people are doing. Our own team, our DLP team in, in our district, meets bi-weekly, and we are, as I mentioned earlier, working on developing this framework, this plan, and we hope to have, have something ready to share with you at the end of the spring semester. That's our, our goal. We hope to be ready to do that at that point. So, how are we doing? In order to evaluate whether or not we are beginning to achieve our equity goal, we have to ask ourselves three questions. Are African-American student scores increasing? Secondly, are our white student scores increasing? And third, is the achievement gap closing?
I feel like I need to add some qualifiers here at this point also. It says African-American students up there, but we are also looking at Hispanic or Latino students, and as best we can, Appalachian students. But the numbers, the Appalachian students first are hard to identify because they don't self-identify on a form like African-American or Hispanic students do. But nevertheless, we look at specific buildings that have greater populations, we know of Appalachian students, so we are tracking that as best we can. The Hispanic students, though, while that population is growing in Middletown, if you track it at any particular grade level, there's such small numbers that one or two or three students can make it look like there's dramatic changes in the percentage of students reaching proficiency, either up or down. So I didn't want to, we are, we are tracking that data at the building level, but in the chart, in the chart that you'll see here in a minute, you'll see African-American students on there, not because that's all we're tracking, but because I didn't want to mislead anybody, because some of those percentages go up and down great amounts, when it's only in fact been two or three students that have changed. But it doesn't mean that we aren't tracking them. I felt, I feel like I needed to put that qualifier on there.
This is kind of a complicated chart.
No, it isn't.
It's got a lot of data on it. Dr. Price created this. If I get stuck, you could jump in and explain the thinking behind it. You'll see on the far right, GOALMET, that's our equity goal. And in, in the five columns where the purple Y is, that indicates that we have indeed made progress in closing the achievement gap and in seeing our students improve. If you look at white students in 2005, 66% of our third grade students passed the test. In 2006, 68 did. So 2% more were successful on that test. So in this column, we can say, yes, our white students did, their scores did increase. If you look at our African-American scores in 2005 and 2006, again, we see an increase. So yes, we can mark this. Now, to determine whether we can put the Y in the final category, we have to take a look at our scores in 2005 for our white students and our African-American students, which if you subtract the African-American goal, or scores from the white student scores, you'll see that there's a difference of 19 percentage points. If you look at 2006 and do the same thing, you have 13 percentage points.
16.
I'm sorry, 16. Oh, it's a, a difference of three. So yes, in this case, we did close the gap by three, three percentage points. Therefore, we can mark this as a, as an achievement of a goal, of our equity goal. If you look at the fourth grade, you can see that, yes, student scores increased. But if you take a look at whether the gap closed or not, you have, you look at the 67% compared with the 44%, you have a difference of 23 points. In 74 and 50, you have a difference of 24 points. So we were one point away from seeing a change. So we cannot say that we closed the gap here. In order to get the Y in the final category, you have to have, yes, you have to have answers yes to all three of those. Now, the first year that we had doubted to do this, the only place where we were able to mark the final category, the equity goal in achievement, was with third-grade math. So the first year, we had one. This year, this past year, we had five, third-grade math, again, two years running. And so obviously, our goal's going to be to maintain the ones we have already achieved and add the rest of them as we move along. We have five categories, but if you look at the increases, white students increased their scores in seven categories, African-American students increased their scores in 10 of our categories, and the gap closed in 10 categories. So we have, we have made some progress. We're not where we want to be, but we are seeing the, the beginnings of the payoff with this work.
Susan, I just, the reason, I just want to do some clarification of the, of the chart, because there is a lot of information here. The reason you see 12 categories in reading and math, they add up to 12 categories, is because we're looking for data that had three or years' worth of data. And so with the new tests that have come on in many areas, we don't have three years' worth of data, because before we can start trending, you need at least three years' worth of data. So right now, those are all the areas where we have three years' worth of data. In the future, you'll see more categories from this different state kind of testing will be added to that. It is important, this is, this is a difficult goal to make, because as Susan pointed out, if you look down, where it says AA increased, African-American increased, you can see that in 10 out of the 12 areas, African-American scores actually increased. But that doesn't automatically mean that we met the equity goal. In order to meet the equity goal, white student scores have to increase and the gap has to close. So you'll see some places where the gap actually closed, the difference is a minus number, which means the gap closed, but for one reason or another, it might have been, the gap could actually close and have scores go down. And it just means that white scores went down faster than African-American scores. So the gap closed, but that certainly doesn't meet our goal. It has to go up in both categories and the gap has to close in order to meet that goal. That's a difficult goal to meet, but that's what it is, and we're not going to be satisfied with anything less. What we hope to be able to show you in the future, because the only way we're going to get to be rated excellent is to see, in the word says the GOALMET column, to see a continuation of yeses all the way across there, because then you know the scores continue to go up every year and the gap continues to close. Until you get to a certain point, you're going to be well into the 90s for everybody, 90% passing or above. And then it's going to be a little harder, but you still will look for increases. So, and as Susan pointed out, in the GOALMET category in the year before, the only one that was met the year before was in third-grade math. It doesn't show on this chart. So in third-grade math, we would actually have said yes in all three of those categories. White increased, African-American increased, gap closed. So in, in the 2005 category, we would have said yes to all three of those for third-grade math only. So if you wanted to see two Ys in a row, it would only be third-grade math. Next year, we hope to add to that when we bring this chart back to you. So one of the things we want to do is look at third-grade math and say, you know, what's been going on for two years that we were able to get those kind of, those kind of results? And so we continue to make adjustments in this work based on what Susan shared prior to this chart, and we will continue to make the, to do the difficult work that this requires to make these changes.
Just a couple of clarifications. These, these scores are what they are. Isn't Ohio graduation test, couldn't it be included on here?
The 10th grade math and 10th grade reading are the OATs.
Okay. And then, so is it our goal, or this is looking at no child left behind goals?
Well, they, if you meet AYP, it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to, this goal is more rigorous.
But this is part of the...
But it certainly aligns with...
This is our equity team's goal.
It certainly aligns with AYP, yes.
Okay, okay. And I, I just want to say, I'm glad to see that, that we have the past group going because it's parental involvement and it's sort of like what Mike Sanders was saying tonight, that one of their goals, the United Way, is to help increase parental understanding and awareness of the importance of, of early childhood learning. And that, that the DLP group is involving, I talked to one of the community members, a PTO president, who appreciated being asked to be on that committee, because she gives a perspective of parents and... the Delt group is involving, I talked to one of the community members, a PTO president, who appreciated being asked to be on that committee, because she gives a perspective of parents. And I think that's what I, I've sensed has been missing, as we have these equity teams and care teams and, you know, but they're working within our district. And I don't know that they're really in touch with where the parents are. I keep coming back to a conversation I had with a teacher recently. And in front of the child, a child showed her mother a score in math. And, and the mother said, oh, don't worry about it. I didn't do well in math either. And even this parent had been working with the child so long to, to want to do a good job in math and, you know, to feel bad about not doing a good job in math and then to have a parent just kind of blow it out. And, you know, unless we make that connection with those parents, to be able to say to that child, well, let's see what we can do to help improve your math score, we're going to miss it altogether. And, you know, maybe parents, the teachers that are involved with these teams, you know, have those conversations with parents and take those into consideration for looking at how to design lesson plans and...
That's part, I mean, the past is, is about us learning from the parents as much as anything. And recognizing that it's not only designing interventions for the student and looking at the student's deficit and trying to fix the broken student. This work is as much about recognizing that what I as a teacher or an administrator brings to the classroom may be just as much of the barrier to that student learning. And it may be invisible to me. It's not because I'm doing something on purpose. But nevertheless, it's still just as harmful to students making progress with their achievement. And so we're trying to focus on both areas. Not only what we can do, we do a lot of that, programmatic stuff to help students. But this is about looking at us as professionals to say, are we part of the barriers, you know, preventing the effective learning going on? And just being open-minded to that and recognizing that just what I bring to the classroom, even unknowingly, may be creating part of those barriers.
How are you going to have a support developed from all the teachers for the goals that an equity team or care team, this framework that you're talking about developing?
Do you mean the work at the Delt committee?
Whichever committee.
The district equity leadership team, yes. First of all, we have to make a decision in terms of where do we expect to go and what do we want to be able to have our staff recognized and used on a routine basis. We already have the start with the equity teams that have been working within the buildings. So we have a number of people who have had an opportunity to have extensive chances for conversation and to develop their thinking, develop their equity lens. We need to disseminate that and make that a more common piece. And so part of what the, the Delt team will do is develop the framework, but the charge will be at the building level, or their, their, their teams to take over and to develop that. And then we'll be there to try and provide resources and support.
Well, you mentioned, you know, part of the, the look would be at, at policy changes and the barriers to the equity. And I would hope, as, you know, we work with policy current and our future, that we really do have that understanding and that comes from the buildings. It's always been my hope that policy develops, it evolves because of people wanting to better communicate what it is we're about as a school district. And so, you know, that needs to come from teachers who are right there and from parents.
We've already started actually doing some of that. When you look at last year, when we looked at our hiring policy, our employment policies, we looked at that. We are looking at teacher induction right now. And, and some of those things we're already beginning. But if you look through our policy manual, there's a lot of opportunity to address these issues.
I know when you first came on board, Dr. Price, this was one of the, the directions that the board wanted you to take us in, and that is embracing the diversity and, and recognizing that we have to close that achievement gap. And I think you, you, the whole team has done a great job of doing that, but the work is not over and it's not done.
Right, partially.
But again, I think it's important that we do this because I think in the end, any community that is going to be successful in the future, I think is one that's going to be the community in the school districts that can embrace their diversity. And I think we're well on our way to, to do that.
We, we cannot ignore these numbers on this page.
Absolutely.
We've had, we've had a community member come and speak several times. And she's speaking to these kind of numbers right here.
Excellent.
The work that we're doing is beginning to make a difference. But as you said, Mr. Ventrelli, we have a lot more work to do. All you have to do is look down at these numbers.
I think it's really important to emphasize again that we're looking for the rising of achievement in each of these groups, in all groups that we're measuring. Because there's so much concern with no child left behind and looking at achievement gaps, that we're, we're lowering that standard. And that's not true. And that's why it's going to be harder and harder to reach that, that goal.
There's, there's a difference in raising achievement like this for everybody versus raising achievement and closing the gap as it goes up for everybody. Lot harder to do.
I think you have to continue to look at the, the data and the results and figure out what's working and what's not. And, and continue to, to try to bring those gaps this way. Chris.
I just have a question. Just want to understand your goal. I caught that everything in the far right-hand column needs to be yeses. But what I didn't understand is what should the numbers be? Are you looking for ninety percent, ninety-five percent, eighty-five percent?
In order to be rated by the state report card, in the elementary grades and middle school grades, it's seventy-five percent. We don't believe, we, we, I hope someday we're going to find that limiting. I would take that right now. But someday, I think we're going to find seventy-five percent limiting. And in some of the Ohio graduations, it's as high as eighty or...
It's eighty-five then at the eleventh grade.
And so those are the benchmarks that the state has set in order to get that category checked off on the report card. And you got to get so many of those checked off to be rated effective or excellent. And so from a, from a standpoint of the report card, that's kind of like the first step. But in order to be successful in what we're talking about here, we're going to have to go beyond that.
Am I correct that the state also has a report card for, for itself, for the number of students in the state who are, are passing?
That's part of the...
The state does a summary each year of the whole state in terms of the percentages in each category for OAT and OGT, as well as their AYP information.
And the, the reason?
The other question I had on that number is, is in what timeframe are you looking to achieve those results?
I, I can put it, an end date to achieve them.
Two thousand fourteen is...
This federal government has.
This government.
Well, I've said, I've said to the board all along, we should see significant differences in five to seven years. When I came here. Was four, about five years ago now, going on.
So we're reaching that point in time then?
Yeah, well, we're starting to see some of the results. Now, when we get to seventy-five percent years, that certainly would be my goal, but...
This, this is really complicated material and it needs to be looked at with real understanding and keeping things in perspective, as your initial comments were about numbers and percentages depending on how many students you're measuring. So it's, it's, you often give us these charts, but I wish you'd have more verbal with it.
That's what I tried to do tonight. This is actually, is, we tried to make this as simple as we could, to, to show in very simple, easily understood terms of whether the goal was met or not.
I just want to say one more thing. Just, I haven't been in these presentations, but the few I've been through, I think this, from a format point of view, is probably the best one I've been through. You give, you've explained what you're trying to accomplish. You've explained how you're going to measure it. You've explained the results to date. The only thing I see lacking from a complete report are the questions I, I ask. When do you expect to, to achieve and where are you on your, on your, on your path of success? And if you haven't achieved that, then the rate of achievement you want to achieve, what are the countermeasures you're going to put in place to put yourself back on the path?
Well, that'd be good for the Delt report.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Price's curriculum? Kindergarten presentation?
Yes. Mrs. Carolyn Mack is going to do a presentation, an update on the, on our kindergarten efforts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There's a book entitled, "Everything I Wanted to Know I Learned in Kindergarten." And some of the highlights it deals with is talking about how you can apply what you've learned in kindergarten to what you're actually doing right now. For example, playing fair, sharing, clean up your own mess, washing your hands, and putting things back where you found them. And we can all apply all of those skills in everything that we do on a daily basis. But in our kindergarten program here in Middletown, we want to extend beyond that point. As mentioned in the report, Success by Six, our students come to us at various levels. And in order for that, we in Middletown have different configurations for our kindergarten program. And research shows that we need to provide developmentally appropriate activities, informal and intellectually engaging activities, teaching children academic skills, and these are by state standards. So the, the nap time that we were familiar with when we were in kindergarten, or the times where they just played, is no longer a part. But we do have what we call play-based curriculum, where it is engaging as well. So all of these things we are doing to raise the achievement level, even as early as kindergarten. We can even back it up to preschool, as well as eliminate the achievement gap. Let's get, here we go. As mentioned again, I will state again, that all, the children come to us with a wide variety of skills, knowledge, and prior experiences. I had the, the opportunity to visit a kindergarten classroom, and this is moving. And it does this to me all the time. Okay, we're going to be ready in a minute. Here we go.
It's a timing issue. Just press once and then it will do it.
I have a, a mean finger here. Here we go. And, and it was interesting in seeing this particular class, the teacher was working one-on-one with students and that all twenty-three kids were doing something differently. And this kid was at the board reading, yet some reading independently. But it was a wonderful experience for a kindergarten classroom, where you don't go in and see the sit-and-get routine, where there's a ditto in their coloring. Now, not to say that we won't see it, but we're moving away from that particular activity. It is important that our kindergarten program is, is critical to our community because it does provide a place for our working parents. And it, there is an increase of students who've had preschool or daycare experiences. Prior to this, most kids' first opportunity of going to school may have been first grade, but that no longer happens. They start as early as six weeks because now it takes two families to have the income. There's also an influence of television, where students have a wider view of what the world is like. So they're not just surrounded by their own rooms. And then there's a renewed interest in getting my kid ready for AYP, for, for the kids, and the testing phenomenal. But we want the kids' first experiences in our district to be one that they will thoroughly enjoy. Here we have the configurations, and I will go into detail about our programs. We have half-day programs, extended day programs, and all-day programs. And the research has shown that it's not so much the, the time that's spent in the program, but most importantly is that teacher and the curriculum that's provided. So no matter what configuration is provided, again, it's the teacher and the curriculum resources that are used for that day. And you can see that teacher doing a one-on-one testing environment with the, the young man. He was responding. It doesn't look like he was happy about it, but he was doing exactly what he needed to do and did extremely well on that day. Our curriculum is one-third part direct instruction, one-third of exploration, and then where's child initiated, where they actually get to play and share and, you know, this stuff that you don't do the fighting and et cetera. It was mentioned earlier about our assessment. And, and again, we go back to our acronym, and this one came from the state. And it's our kindergarten readiness assessment. All students who are in our kindergarten program in the fall is given this assessment. And as stated before, those that score nineteen or better are those students, as described by the state, are ready and prepared for kindergarten. It is not to sift any child between those who have the skills and those who do not have the skill. It provides us with tools to determine, what else do I need to do to get this child to where the other kids are or to be ready? In our half-day program, we have an AM and PM session. All students are eligible for this. The teacher ratio is one to twenty-five, and the programs are located at the schools that you see initiated here. So that's our typical half-day program. Okay, our extended day. This is where, once we decided within the building, those students who score below the nineteen, we have what we called an extended day. The child may start with one teacher in the morning, but may have an additional teacher in the afternoon because they need that additional support in order to be at the score of nineteen or better. And so the programs are located at those, the ratio is one to eighteen. We do have an all-day program, which is in its first year of inception. And so these kids, and it's based on poverty-based funding. It is not something that the district decided. It was based on funding that was given to us by the state. And it's all day, every day. Studies show that students who attend full day are twenty percent, twenty-six percent more likely not to repeat a grade level. Again, it's to close the gap in, in this particular school. And it's to raise the achievement levels of all students. And again, it is at Rosa Parks and Amanda, and these students that attend these particular areas. As far as where are we now and what is it that we would like to do, of course, I'm backing up. We, as far as program evaluation and, and how our students are doing, those that are extending, attending extended day, do we have any data? Well, we have a baseline data that because they're reading first schools, they're using the DIBELS, and teachers, you saw that one teacher doing that, they're actually going through the process of doing a one-on-one testing with every child. Once we get that result, we'll do it again in February, latter part of January, first part of February. So we'll have, if there's been any growth. So we will be back to share that information with you. We also in the spring do the Terranova testing. So the children will have their first opportunity with standardized testing. As far as expanding the program, we would love to have in every school, a full-day kindergarten program, all day. And, and that, and with anything that you ask for comes with funding and money. And that would be contingent upon any funding that we get from the state for poverty base, and then we can extend it. But that's where we are. And, and then we have to look at, there would be six additional teachers, and it costs approximately thirty thousand for materials and resources just to get that particular kindergarten set up and established.
That doesn't include wages? That's just...
That's correct.
That's just supplies?
That is just supplies. So you're talking about six teachers, then it depends on years of experiences and what they come to the table with.
So for every new class that you add, it's thirty thousand dollars plus wages and benefits?
Correct. Yes. So that's where we are with program evaluation. We are also looking at a standards-based report card. And right now, we'll have, we have a developmental team where we actually have created the, the framework for it. The next step is we're having our kindergarten teachers to come in and look at it, to give us some feedback, to say, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, this doesn't need to be here. It is based on the content standards, and it's in sequence according to what they're going to teach in that timeframe. The goal is to pilot it second semester, depending on how much feedback we get from our staff. Because sometimes you get so much feedback, you have to go back and recreate. So we're trying to see how much feedback we get back. And then once we determine that, then we'll go ahead and do, go with the implementation then we'll go ahead and go with the implementation for second.
Carol, sometimes we take for granted, we deal with these terms all the time. When you talk about a standards-based report card, it's essentially more descriptive that's aligned with the state's standards. When you get a report card that's standards-based, you'll see a statement basically on every standard, and feedback about where your child is relative to that standard. It's not a grade relative, it's not a grade in the traditional sense that you see on a lot, many report cards that we use now. This is criterion reference, meaning the standards are the criterion, and you're getting feedback on whether they've mastered that standard or they haven't. And it's a more effective communication tool for parents.
And it will be in parent-friendly language, because it's one thing to say, "Your child is able to," and then there's terminology, and you're going, okay, so what can he or she do? So you know, your child is able to recognize the following letters of the alphabet, uppercase and lowercase, or your child can count to 10. Very plain, because we want the parent to know what the child can do. And the other piece is, it is in emerging, so you see the various levels. So if your child is still at this level, he still has an opportunity or seed to move forward. So it'll graduate, so that you can see it, and very spiraling, so that as I start at this level, then I continue to increase and move forward.
Versus a traditional grade that might say, "Language arts, satisfactory."
Now, we started a standards-based report card in other areas.
Yes, we have it in the second grade.
Okay, so we're continuing with that? I guess I'm not gonna be on the board?
Yes, and we hope to have through fourth grade, developed by the spring. We have various teams working on that.
Because obviously, you're starting here with a standards-based report card. We've already got it in other grades. I guess for the new board, it would probably be good to see, we had that presentation a year or so ago. It'd be nice to hear where you stand, or how that's getting, what kind of reception that is, getting with the parents and the teachers.
I think we need to be looking at policy implications there, as far as bringing this all together for evaluation and expectations of the district for K-4, whatever.
Well, my only point is, I know we've done the standards-based report card in other grades, and I think the board would, an appropriate report, although I'm not in the position to ask for it after tonight, should be forthcoming.
What?
No, you've really...
I really messed up. Okay, the last one, you know, I told you, I'm a click finger, is that we do have, and it's according to state policy and board, what we call the early entrance into kindergarten. There were, and I'm gonna add this too, due to a reduction in staff, we all assume some new responsibility. So I'm hitting a learning curve as well with kindergarten and preschool, but we also have what we call the early entrance into kindergarten. So if you have a parent who requests testing their preschool of age, five by the deadline, and the parent would like to have their child tested for kindergarten, so we do have assessments that are available, such as the crawl, we also have the math, and we did have four preschool parents who requested this over the summer, who are now in kindergarten. So they had to qualify in those areas. And the same with first grade. So we do have that particular piece in place, meeting the state guidelines according to early entrance. And again, it is based on assessment and assessment scores, and a parent survey that is a part of the evaluation. Are there any questions?
What test is a measure for evaluation for gifted?
We use the, first, we look at the TERRanova, and that's what's given in the spring. And then for those students who are very close to the area, and we give them a second-chance testing, we use Iowa Test of Basic Skills.
I'm gonna go back to the earlier presentation, and if the success by six is working, once it's implemented, then we will see our crawl scores go up?
Yes.
I mean, that's the end result.
Some of our scores were actually, the crawl scores were actually lower than, I believe Cincinnati Public. I mean, this is, we have some serious issues that need to be addressed.
And hopefully, success by six will be part of that solution.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're doing work with our own preschools.
One of the things that you'll see in our preschool, and as Carolyn said, you know, she has picked up this year, this was not her assignment last year, both preschool and kindergarten for us, Department of Learning, and so she's had a learning curve. But we intend, I shared with you all the new regulations for preschool a couple of board meetings ago. One of the pieces is, all of our preschoolers will take the crawl at the end of the year, because we want to make sure when they come out of our preschool, and we have 10 preschool units, that they are on target to go on to kindergarten, ready to learn. So we have, this is, I guess, we have a whole different curriculum in our preschool for the first time, with ongoing assessments throughout. And when I say assessments, I'm not talking just a test. These are age-appropriate, child-appropriate ways of assessing their learning. And Carolyn can actually tell you more about that.
So that should translate into a 19 or higher, for any kid that's coming out of our preschool into the kindergarten.
That's the goal that's been given to the teachers. I have said that when our kids leave our preschool program, they will score 19.
What happens if they don't?
Well, we have a curriculum in place, this is the first year of implementation. It is very thematic, it does infuse all of the curricular areas, but after every three units, or themes, there is an assessment. So we have, and they're doing that now, so there's some baseline information. After the next three, there will be another assessment. The interesting piece is that the kids get the same assessment each time. So you can detect the growth from the first time to the second time. So for example, the letters of the alphabet, did the child get five more? Did they miss the same letters? Then we'll know how to go back and provide the additional support. And then there will be, there's three assessments that are given for preschool. So children are immersed in literacy, they're immersed in mathematics, and again, they still have the element of social activities, play, dramatic, sand and water, but again, the teacher has the opportunity to help the children, introduce them to letter recognition, and sounds, and that kind of thing. So most of it's phonemic awareness, which most of the kids are missing.
And you know, I know John Graff, who's a former principal of ours, is now the director of the Head Start program, and he's been working very closely, because he very much wants all the students coming out of his Head Start preschools to be ready for kindergarten. So he's been a part of the success by six, I know he's been working with Evelyn.
We're actually doing joint training, the staff, the state is providing training for our preschool teachers, and we're doing that in conjunction with Head Start, which Mr. Graff had set up for us. And it'll be six training days during this year for our staff, strictly on state standards preschoolers.
And these are many of the kids that have some of the greatest barriers that will be coming through Head Start.
I know we've had discussions as far as policy of promotion, retention, and I'm pleased to hear you're seeing that you're looking at testing that's child-appropriate, and it's play-based, and I think the report card going into the standards space is much more helpful, so it's not a pass-fail situation for a child, but a developmental spiral. And I, but still, are we looking at what we're gonna do for the child who is not ready for kindergarten, or not ready for first grade?
Yes.
What types of programs are there?
Well, that's where we would actually determine early which of the programs the child would fall in, if they're in the Amanda or Rosa Park group, and know they would have full day. We would know immediately that the child would need to go into extended day, where the child would have a double dose of kindergarten. We are also looking at, and we've not developed this, as some tools that the parents can utilize over the summer, maybe some books, some manipulatives, just a little kit that the kid can have over the summer to reinforce, to play, so that there will be some growth over the summer as well. And some things that the parent can do to say, these are skills that will enhance the child's readiness for kindergarten in the fall.
Or by then, first grade?
Yes, yes, or first grade.
But it's important to note funding sources for this, because without these funding sources, look to Mr. Sotting.
Yeah, that certainly wouldn't be possible. And again, with the latest budget bill by the governor, there has been a specific target towards all-day kindergarten. We are receiving poverty-based assistance in order to help fund these types of programs.
My vision is to have all-day kindergarten for all of our students, because I, you know, I haven't really liked the idea of putting all those children who don't score above a 19 together, because it's good for all of our kids to mix, as we truly want to encourage that diversity and support it. But, you know, how are we gonna get there if we don't have every child together in those kindergartens? So there's no stigma attached. And I guess my other question is, at what age do you begin to identify special needs children? We do that before they come to preschool?
We have some in our preschool that are at the age of three.
And do we catch more, is they're in our preschool or in our kindergarten?
Well, unfortunately, one of the issues we deal with with the equity work is identification for special education way, way before it should be done.
That's what I'm asking.
We have disproportionality of students that are identified for special education. And in fact, we're dealing with that with the State Department right now, coming in and offering us assistance in that area.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Dr. Price, Program of Studies.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yes, Ms. Alther? Each year, we bring before the board the Program of Studies, and we highlight any changes. We are not asking for any action this evening. This is placing it on the table. If board members or the community want to ask questions, or look at this, it will be available until our first regular meeting in January. So I would ask you to look it over and formulate any questions you have, and we'll try to get them answered before we ask for action at our January board meeting.
And the two new board members have gotten these. I assume they'll be asked to approve these in January?
Yes.
Are there any questions at this point from the board? Can we, as we call this, as a first reading, I guess?
Right, we just placed it on the table tonight.
Okay, I don't know that, unless there's discussion...
This author wants to highlight what changes were made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just trying.
So you know which changes to look at.
Sorry. I think I can see that, because of red line, but okay.
If you turn right past the tan cover, and then the cover that'll be on the Program of Study, there is a sheet, it's like this, yellow highlights, and that actually identifies for you the major changes, or all of the changes that are in here, and then the ones in yellow are the major changes. Predominantly this year, it is a lot of cosmetic changes, the dates, so forth, but if you look on page three, the two major changes occur because of change in state law last December. The core law was passed, which changed the high school graduation standards in the state of Ohio. Those graduation standards go into effect with the class of 2011, which is this year's freshman class. We did pass those last year, so that our freshmen are aware of that, but this is the first time it'll actually appear in this booklet, since the booklet is done in December of each year. And so the graduation requirements reflect the change in law. For us, the major change in that is the four years of mathematics, of which Algebra II has to be, at least through Algebra II, has to be mastered in that four years. And the other thing is the additional science, being either a unit in chemistry, physics, advanced biology, or other physical or life science. We always offered those in our district, but now students graduating must take one of those in order to graduate. It reduced the elective, the amount of electives a student takes by one in those graduation requirements. Going right along with that, the other change that occurred is page six, which is the criteria for diploma with honors. And you'll see, it's all redlined, and it's followed by a complete new chart, because this is a phase in and a phase out. For the students who graduate before, or the class of 2010 and before, they will finish under the requirements they started as a freshman. For the class of 2011, which is again, this year's freshman, they will have new requirements to receive an honors diploma. The major piece of that is, instead of three years of science, three years of social studies, and three years of math, for an honors diploma in the state of Ohio, you will now have to have four years of science, four years of math, and four years of social studies to graduate. The other change that is marked as a major change is number 28, or is on page 28.
Well, let's back up.
I'm sorry.
If I'm seeing this correctly, to get an honors diploma now?
Yes.
I'm just, oh wait, okay, no, it was the same thing. Is there a change in what they need on the ACT and SAT? Okay, so that's always been a requirement?
No, ACT and SAT are held the same, grade point on a 4.0 scale is the same.
Okay, okay.
It's just the subject matter that has changed for an honors diploma.
Sorry.
It particularly impacts students in career technical firms.
They also have the four units, and then instead of the foreign language, they have career technical courses that go in that location. So there are changes there. And their diploma is also listed in here, as we have many students who do go on to the career technical school, so that that's listed. The other requirement that comes in, but not with this graduating class, is something called personal financial literacy, or the economics requirement. Our students can get either, since all of our students take economics, they will receive it in that course, but this year, working with Butler Technology, they are replacing in their work and family life, they're adding a personal financial literacy class, so that students can take a direct class to receive that.
And so that will be a credit that our students at the high school can earn, taking that Butler Tech course instead of economics?
Yeah, well, they still have to take economics, that's a requirement to graduate. But personal financial literacy is only a small portion in the economics course, and so some students will want a much more...
A really small portion?
Yeah, very small portion. Some students will want a much more expanded version of a course, and this allows them to get that.
Well, I might say that students need that expanded version. So you're just saying, the major curriculum for economics that we have is not in the Butler Tech course offering?
No, not the personal finance.
But does our economics class count toward the state requirement for...
As long as we hit all the standards that are required, there are certain standards that are required for personal financial literacy. And as long as we're addressing all of those for the class of 2011, when they take economics their senior year, yes, it will count. Those are the major changes. The rest of them predominantly are, as I said, date changes, the NCAA, we worded out, we've had to carry dual language for a couple of years, because their standards changed. Those now are in effect for every student in the high school. The same thing, if you look at page four and five, we've carried the language of honors and advanced placement in class rank, and it's been different for different graduating classes. With next year's students who will be in our high school, every one of them will have the same language, or the same guidelines for honors and advanced placement classes and class rank. So those wordings are now phased out of the book.
And Butler Tech gave you this copy for...
Butler Tech always gives me all the changes and the updates, okay? Mr. Hare is very good about working with us on the changes from Butler Tech.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bedtime reading?
Dr. Price, Student Services.
Yes, under F1, it's recommended approval of the additional employees to administer medication to students.
They have a motion.
Some move?
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't need to... Are there any discussions? Discussion. Mr. Stotzen, the role.
Dr. McClure.
Aye.
Mrs. McNeil.
Aye.
Mrs. Andrew.
Yes.
Mr. Ventrell, the S, motion carrying. Let's see, uh, Business Operations. Nate, you can be quick.
No, I believe Kim is going to do the-
Okay, well, I'm sure Kim will be quick.
Update this Tuesday.
All right, Kim?
Is this the final meeting you're going to have to sit through with us?
Just stuck with this for one more.
One more.
Yeah? Good evening.
You enjoy it so much to be here.
Yeah, this is the highlight of our month.
But you have young children, you have all these things, knowledge now to look at, consider.
Okay. All right. We have a brief construction update for you this evening. All three projects are coming to a close. Renovation at Rosedale is slated for completion at the end of this month and Mayfield and Wildwood, for all intensive purposes, are complete. That being said, oh, look at me, I got ahead of myself out of practice. Okay. There we go. First up is Wildwood. Okay. At this point, we have a handful of corrections left to be made to satisfy the Punch List and Co-compliance. The Commissioning Agent, Stan Associates, they've started their assessments of both buildings, looking at the electrical and HVAC systems and furniture deliveries. That's pretty much what we've got going on these days. We've seen a multitude of vendors in the building getting all the furnishings set up and ready to go for you. Okay, here's an aerial. This is a little out of date, but this gives you an idea of how the buildings are situated on the site. Okay? This one was taken this morning, nice and soggy. You can see that all the seams drawn is in place, the marquee's been set, everything's ready to go for you. Okay, this picture is probably about two weeks old. Since this picture was taken, all of the construction materials have been removed. The area's been cleaned and waxed and now it's full of furniture. So I didn't have much to show you as far as that area went. Here's a look at the gymnasium. You can see you've got the telescoping bleachers in, the gym equipment, wall padding, wood flooring. Okay, just look down the main corridor. Okay, this is the kindergarten room. The two kindergarten rooms in the pre-K are carpeted rooms, a little larger than the rest. Technology's pretty much complete, all the casework's in, getting everything nice and clean for you. Okay, this is a typical classroom. Again, you can see you've got the technology in place, the, do we have a pointer? Okay, that's your projector, it's here.
Is that stuff all, does it all work? I know we had problems in the first stuff.
Yes, they're going through the testing process right now, but we've had-
It isn't, it will.
Okay. Does it work in other buildings now?
Yes. There are some issues that are still coming up, but we are addressing them on a daily basis.
Under warranty, correct?
Absolutely. Okay, here's the playground.
When was that?
That's a depressing picture.
Yeah, it's not getting much use these days, but you do see that there are some footprints, so Frank has been out there. Maybe that's why he's got a cold. I know. Okay, on to Mayfield. Right, same situation here, inspections, commissioning, furniture deliveries. Okay, again, an outdated aerial, but it gives you an idea of how it sits in the neighborhood. There we go. Okay, another soggy picture from this morning. Again, the marquee is in place, all of the stonework's been restored and ready to go for you. Okay, here's a look from the media center. This is one of my favorite spots in the building, so you guys are probably sick of seeing it by now, but I think it's nice. Okay, this is the main office, the reception area. You can see the TVs have been hung. We have vacuumed the carpets since the picture was taken. Okay, this is the main stairwell. Okay, a look at the gymnasium. There we go. Okay. Oh. Okay, cafeteria. Again, we've got furniture deliveries. This area has been waxed and cleaned, no difference in the floors. Okay, this is one of the multipurpose rooms. You can see that there's the operable partition that can separate the space for two separate uses. Furniture has been delivered, set up, and ready to go for you. Okay, and on to central. All right, this building is really close to being done. The Punch List process has started. There are a handful of items left to complete to button up all the finishes. You'll see that fixtures, casework, finish paint, all of the elements to get the building completed for you are ongoing and just about done. Okay, here's some casework. You can see that the carpeting's been installed. They've put some paper down to protect the area. The doors and frames have been painted, ceiling tiles are dropped. Okay, another area, or I'm sorry, another classroom area. You can see the AV cabinet's been installed, media boards are in, finish paint's ongoing.
See, it's now out.
Yeah. Okay, here's another look at one of the additions. You can see that all the finish elements on the exterior are complete, all the caulking and flashing. Okay, another look at one of the classroom areas. You can see that the sink fixtures and final plumbing connections have been made.
Is this in the old section or the new section?
This is in one of the renovated areas.
The one, the renovated, okay. How about this? Oh, okay. Uh, okay, I got you. That's why we keep you around, Nate.
Yeah, what would we do without him? Okay, here is one of the pre-existing areas. This was a larger room. Again, an operable partition's been installed to separate the area for separate uses. Okay, this is the gymnasium. The rubberized gym flooring has been installed and is completed. Turned out quite nice, I think. Okay, and that's it, unless there are any questions?
We didn't get a picture of the ceiling in the gym.
I don't know if you can see the ceiling. Oh, sure can't.
The improvement.
You should have to come back one more time.
I think we can arrange that.
Email it.
All right. For our next meeting, we're going to have our final construction update and then you will be rid of us. Oh, don't cry.
Good.
Okay. Well, it hardly seems like, how long's this taken? Five years?
Five, four.
I mean, it seems like five years.
Right, but it's been five years, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, again, I think you guys have done a great job and we appreciate, I know there's been some bumps along the way that we've had to deal with, but for the most part, it's been a smooth process and you guys should be commended for the job that you've done, so.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Board, you know, we really appreciate it.
Heck of an accomplishment.
Right.
I agree with it. Your help has been tremendous.
Very good. Any questions from the Board?
Please pass those comments along and happy holidays to the rest of Quantel. No, it's been a good team.
Thank you.
Eric, Finance.
It is recommended approval of the financial reports for the month ending November 30th of 2007.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, discussion or Board?
I would simply just point you back to the final page of the finance report, which compares the budget to actual. The baseline of the budget is actually the five-year forecast. One of the things that I definitely want to highlight this evening is this five-year forecast was prior to all of the implementation of the cuts and reinstatements that were done at the last Board meeting. So this number has changed. Actually, later in the agenda, I'm going to go through what some of those changes were and how they impact the five-year forecast. After this meeting, we'll actually update it and then that will become the baseline comparison to the budget to actual. But as we look through it, even with those changes, what I would anticipate being as far as the revenues, they're right on target with a total of about forty-nine percent, which I would anticipate forty-one percent at this point. There's always timing issues with revenues as they come in on calendar-type basis as opposed to, as opposed to a month-to-month type basis. So there's, there's always going to be those variations. As we look at expenditures, I would anticipate these actually to be trending under budget due to the fact that we did have a number of cuts, over four million dollars worth of personnel cuts, and actually 5.5 million implemented at the beginning of the year, that many of those have actually been brought back at this point, but have not been reflected in the five-year forecast numbers. So as we trend to those, we would, we would see those based upon the actions at the Board meeting, at the last Board meeting, but those will actually begin to change as we move through the fiscal year. Overall, though, right on target with forty-one percent of the budget being in place at this point in time. So we're trending right where we would anticipate being on each of them.
Do we have property tax received and MSO records our cash balances at four million?
Yes.
So that's a result of receipt of taxes?
Actually, yeah, it was a result of the personal property tax item that was, that was placed in there.
Okay.
So the five million.
And then we've still got a million four in our bond retirement. Or is that the construction or the, what's left in the actual construction account?
In the construction account, you will see-
This is the chance to say we're on time and under budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I mean, we're all-
On budget.
On budget.
Currently, the cash balance in the building fund is just over ten million dollars total. We're rapidly spending that down as we approach the end of the, end of the project as we, we looked at tonight. The bond retirement fund is actually the payment for the debt over the time-
Right, okay. Building funds at ten million, I'm with you.
Correct. So those two are, are different.
And then I assume there will be a final report to the community about the overall cost and where we ended up and-
Most definitely. Once we get all of the interest and all of that calculated, we anticipate actually the draw schedule being almost a year after the end of this project, when all the bills come in, all the retainage accounts, which the retainage is actually held out for contractors in order to make certain that the, the job is completed. So at that point, once all of that process is through, it's probably about a year out, sometime in, you know, early 2008, I would anticipate everything being wrapped up. We'll go through at that point in, uh, early 2009, excuse me, of that being wrapped up and we'll come back with a final finance report of all of the building project.
Can I just note that our food service fund is a little bit negative, but-
Yeah, we, we actually, because that's a reimbursable fund, we leave that to run at a, at a negative cash balance. That's really timing issues more than, than anything else. Last year, we actually came in slightly in the positive at year end, and that's what this is as well. So we anticipate that actually to grow by the end of the, the-
Any questions from the Board?
What do you say is you're holding over then for contingencies or closing out?
Depends on the individual contract.
But in total?
It's ten million.
Well, ten million's the total. I would say right now in contingency is, is-
I'm sorry.
I would actually have to go back and look at that. I would hate to give you a number at this point. I don't have the total. We have a number of projects that are finished that we're holding in retainage and several that are in process. So I can bring, I can bring back what's in total at the next Board meeting.
I just think it's important to keep that as a separate item section in the book for, until that is finished.
Yeah, it, it's included in that ten million total number. We can certainly define that out.
That'll all be part of the final report.
Yeah, it's all gonna, and ultimately, it's, it's paid out. Once we, the retainage accounts is held in an escrow account.
Right.
It is not held into ours, so it's paid out of the total amount held by First Financial Bank until that, until that occurs.
So that's not, the retainage that is in, no, I'm sorry.
In escrow.
The retainage in the escrow is not included in the ten million, but it is held within our total bank accounts at First Financial. So I can easily come out with that.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Stotzen, the role.
Dr. McClure.
Aye.
Mrs. Andrew.
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil.
Aye.
Mr. Ventrell.
Yes.
Motion carrying. Second item is the approval of the accounting transactions for the month ending October 31st of 2007, including donations, surplus property fund-to-fund transfers, advances, returns of advances, and accounting transaction as presented now. It is included as the T1 report in your Board packet and there are three donations.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Again, I would just like to recognize TCE Digital Solutions, Bull's Run, and Team Mentoring Committee, which they came before the Board to deliver that check.
They did.
Were there donations to the system? Anything else on this, Mr. Stotzen?
Nope, the other items are standard month-end advances as per the Auditor State.
The role. Mrs. McNeil.
Aye.
Mrs. Andrew.
Yes.
Dr. McClure.
Aye.
Mr. Ventrell.
Yes.
Motion carrying. It is also recommended the approval of the amended appropriation resolution as included in your packet as item T2.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Again, this is just what we need to do to keep the Auditor happy.
Actually, yes, this is, sets the upper budgetary amount that we, that we can set. It actually, as items get changed throughout the course of the year, and there are a number of changes, typically at this point in time, most of them deal with the grant, the grants that we receive. We actually get a carryover allocation at this point in time. That gets included in, so we actually know what the amount is. It is based upon the last year's ending cash balance plus any of the anticipated receipts that would come in. We fully appropriate all of those items in this, and this again is an Auditor State requirement.
Any other questions? Eric?
Mrs. Andrew.
Yes.
Dr. McClure.
Aye.
Mrs. McNeil.
Aye.
Mr. Ventrell.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
And finally.
Item H4 is the approval of the updated five-year forecast. And I actually have, there's a couple minor changes to the verbiage of the assumptions and I want to pass those out and-
Good for you.
Did I pass enough now?
I'm sure you did.
I can pass mine.
Let me highlight the changes actually as the ones that are included in, in the Board packet. Number one, there was actually a, on page two, it's redline version, that was missed in the original, the date was missed in the original submission of December 31st of 2007. It wasn't updated when we updated for the levy that had just renewed. So that went from 2007 to 2010. I also added just in the next paragraph that the 1.5 million dollars was not approved by the voters. I didn't think that that was, that was just, needed to be clarified because of that item. As we flip to page three, again, just another statement. In addition, voters approved the renewal of the three-year emergency levy generating four million dollars per year on November 6th. Just another statement to, to make sure that that is, is clear throughout the forecast. And then one other item in line 3.01 Personnel Services. The third paragraph down, you can actually see where it talks about the Middletown Classified Association contract. It's defined as, there was some confusion about whether, what time that was. And that is actually fiscal year 2006. It includes, it was signed in 2005, so it's 2005, 2006. It remains in effect until 2008. So there was actually just a, a piece to put in there to make that a little clearer. And then I did notice a spelling mistake on the last page, which expenditures needed to be corrected. That's it.
But the numbers didn't change?
Numbers didn't change at all. There was no change to the assumptions. This was actually reviewed, submitted and reviewed to the Finance Committee on November 27th. We again reviewed the changes. This does incorporate all of the changes that had occurred at the last Board meeting from staffing and from the, the program cuts that were put into place, as well as the ones that were not brought back. So it really represents about 1.5 million dollars worth of reduced programs and services. As you look at that, the key year is fiscal year 2010 on the last page of the financial forecast in your packet. And again, that is the spreadsheet and that shows just over 1.1 million dollars worth of a positive cash balance in fiscal year 2010. So that is a change from the last forecast showing it as being almost a 2.9 million dollar deficit in October of 2005, or October 25.
But that was a result of the savings that we realized.
Result of the cuts we had put in place at the beginning of the year. Exactly. And that's what we anticipated. Basically, the 1.5 million dollars, whether it comes from cuts or whether it comes from the additional operating revenue of being just over 1.1 million, is what we need in order to carry a cash balance at the end of the year. This is still very slim as far as number of days' cash that's available to the, to the organization in order to, to pay bills, but it certainly gives us to, to a positive piece, which is what's required by law.
But through fiscal 2010, we're projecting a positive cash balance. However, as you refer to as it as the perfect storm, if we are not able to, well, we either have to cut spending by what, $6 million?
Yes.
Or we need to get renewals of some of the operating issues that'll be expiring. So again, I think it's just, I think it's important that we keep our eye on that as we go forward. It seems like these things crop up and all of a sudden, somebody doesn't realize that, oh my goodness, you know, you didn't tell us that you were going to have a $6 million deficit in 2011, yet, you know, we've been doing these forecasts for, for many years now and clearly that's what it's showing.
Yep, and we've continued to hit, hit our benchmarks and our targets all the way through. We review it. Again, keep in mind that this is based upon assumptions. There's going to be some variability over the, over the course of the forecast. I anticipate a number, you know, of changes. If there's significant changes, we'll certainly bring it back. This is the first amendment. We knew that there would be amendment based upon the last Board meeting. We had to submit in October the initial forecast to get our compliance check mark from the Auditor's State. We knew we didn't have everything included at that point in time. This does include it. So this is the first amendment that reflects those changes. If there are significant assumptions to change throughout the course of next year, I'll bring those back as well.
Mr. Stotzing?